Didn't get started here. Yeah, surprise when it's eight twenty-three. Eight twenty-three. Okay. We're gonna move on to the action agenda. First on the action agenda is budget amendment number one. Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment number one? Is there a second?
A second.
All right, any questions?
I just had one question, Mr. Warren is here, okay. And I haven't pulled it up yet, but there was just a move of money, a very small amount, from the capital outlay contingency fund used to replace the audiology equipment. And I guess my question is, and you probably don't have the data on your fingertips, but how much money is in that contingency fund?
We are allowed to, I think the maximum is about five percent of the total budget, and I think we're close to about three percent. And I do not have the exact number off the top of my head, but I'm thinking it's close to about three hundred and fifty thousand. But we try to keep most of that for just in case something, a roof, you know, goes goes south, or, you know, a large project. So, you know, we're allowed to keep five percent, and we normally keep well below that to try to.
Okay, so that's just the contingency fund, that's not the fund balance?
Right, yeah, that's the contingency fund built into each year's budget and capital funds.
Okay, so that's, is that a percentage, you were saying it's a percentage of the capital outlay budget?
The, yes, the beginning budget of the capital, the expected budget for that year of capital outlay, five percent is the maximum we can have.
And that doesn't come out of the fund balance, this comes out of the capital outlay budget that year?
Yeah, so, yeah, it just comes out of the new year allotted funds from the county, the forty forty-two.
So, the fund balance as of the end of the fiscal year 2012, I think is the last I have in the audit, was eight point nine million dollars. Does that just carry over every year if we don't have an emergency?
Yeah, which fund balance is that exact, because this is capital outlay only, is that?
This says capital outlay.
Okay, so, it does carry over each year. Basically, what that is, is unfinished projects from previous years, because we only have enough time to get as many as we can in, and those are unfinished projects that, well, they're ongoing projects that get re-appropriated the next year.
Okay, great, all right, thank you, that's the only question.
Any other questions, Mr. Warren? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so next, we have the minutes from the November seventh, 2013, open session. Do they have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to amend the minutes, the two changes that I sent to Mr. Reinhardt, just clarifying my no votes on the STEM High School money and the technology money.
Okay, so, there's a motion to amend the minutes, and basically, it's clarifying Ms. Baldwin's reasons that she voted no for those two items. So, is there a second to amend the minutes? Okay, back to the original motion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all right, next is the intent to purchase the smart boards, the BenQ projectors, and the Ladybug document cameras. Is there a motion to approve this purchase?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I do have a question, I don't know if Dr. Fuchs is here, or?
He is not.
Mr. Warren is still here?
No, he's not.
Or whoever, is somebody? Okay.
Okay, your question?
Yes, this is about one point four million dollars expenditure, and apparently, there's still classrooms that don't have the smart boards, or BenQ projectors, or the document cameras. I had requested to know where the money was coming from, and I believe, Dr. Baldwin, you said it was capital outlay? Let me go back.
That's exactly right. That is part of the capital outlay budget that was approved by this board. This is year three. Just for the public, the smart boards, the BenQ projectors, and the document cameras, those are components in what we have defined three years ago as a standard that we desire in every one of our classrooms for digital learning. And so, this is year three of that expansion, and Robert, we'll probably turn it over to you. I know that our initial, three years ago, our initial intent was, I think, with elementary, then we moved to high, to middle, high, and now we're sort of back into, back to elementary, is that right?
Our original decision was to start at the high schools, which we did two years ago. Last year, we funded putting those in the middle schools, and then this year, we're moving to the elementary schools, and our plans are to go back to the high schools next year, if funds are available, to continue that project. What we have to do, based on the numbers that you see there on that intent to purchase, is based on what we feel we can purchase to fulfill the need. The reason the numbers are different there between the smart boards, and the BenQs, and the Ladybugs, is because we take into consideration what's already there, and what can still be used. So, as you see, we've got a whole lot more smart boards that are already installed in the elementary schools, that need a projector that needs to be mounted in order for that to work properly. Right now, we have projectors on carts in the middle of the room, and as soon as a student kicks a cart, then the board has to be reconfigured. So, that's the whole purpose of putting that new data projector mounted on the wall to where it can be used more appropriately with a smart board.
Okay, I'm just trying to reconcile the numbers, what I've, and maybe, this is some of that carryover, if it was a three-year project, the board approved two million dollars in countywide technology requests, but these are all broken down, and they don't seem to fit this category. So, I'm trying to figure out if it's the two million we budgeted this year, if it's part of that money, or was this some money carried over from another year to do this project?
That money's not carried over, MTAC is giving capital outlay funds every year, and we spend it every year.
Right, and that's what I've got here, but, and I'm just seeing, you know, it's broken down for lifecycle replacement for libraries, for example, was a hundred and thirty-five thousand. School equipment allotments are a hundred and thirty-five thousand. You know, I don't see these specific items.
It could be, if you're looking at the budget items, it could say presentation suites, or, I don't know what document you're looking at.
Yeah, this is the capital outlay budget that we just approved in the spring for 2013-14, and that's where I just, you know, I just need to know where, exactly where this money is coming from, you know, that's just my question specifically, because I don't see it. I mean, I see a one million dollar amount here for NCYS computers slash presentation system.
That's part of it.
And that might be okay.
Depending on which one of those items is in, which one of those line items you're looking at, we try to bring those together to provide that suite that we're talking about, which includes the smart board, the presentat, the data projector, and the document camera.
Yeah, I'm just, was concerned, I didn't want to be over budget.
We will only purchase what we have money for. So, although you see those numbers there, if we come up to a certain point that we don't have enough money for that, that's where we'll stop.
Okay, all right, thank you, and maybe, you know, later, when you have more time, you can specifically, you know, explain, send me an email, you know, detailing where in the capital outlay budget, you know, these items are from, and I'm sure that one million dollars is part of this. Okay, thank you.
All in favor of purchasing these items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, now, we're gonna move on to the policies that we've moved from the consent agenda. First policy is number twenty-one twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, were these to be presented for action together, or individually?
I was asked individually.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so, do they have a motion to approve policy twenty-one twenty-two?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we started dealing with these, I think, about a year ago, so.
Right, well, I don't know if it was that long. Yes, I still have concerns with the language, and how the board is actually treating themselves in this policy. There's an assumption made that, that there may be inaccurate or incomplete information given out by board members, and this relates to the next policy, because in that policy, our ability to obtain complete and accurate information is restricted. So, you know, I still don't feel like we've worked the language out here, and that's my concern, you know, I don't know if anybody else feels that that language needs to be changed, but making the assumption that board members will give out inaccurate and incomplete information, I guess, is acceptable, considering the fact that we're getting ready to restrict our ability to obtain accurate and complete information in the next policy. So, I wanted to express that concern, and that's why I'll be voting against this policy, unless we do send it back to change the language.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, you're accurate, we've been working on this for a long time, and we have hashed this and debated it, it's time to vote on this.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, policy twenty-one twenty-four, do they have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, this is a policy that's actually, an article's been published in a statewide journal related to this policy, and the establishment of the superintendent as a gatekeeper. The requests for information by board members is restricted, that they may not be answered before a board meeting, within forty-eight hours of a board meeting. This, we had a public comment at the last meeting, because this was up for first reading, and the commenter said that you're basically making board members second-class citizens, we don't have the same rights that citizens have to request information. We cannot ask staff members questions here in the central office, everything has to go through the superintendent. For example, if I want to ask Ms. Cheek a question about the STEM High School, she's our CTE director, because the curriculum has been changed from what was previously approved by the STEM High School, recommended by the STEM High School Committee. So, if I want to know, what is the new curriculum, I can't ask her, I have to go through the superintendent. And this was a procedure that we actually, the board majority put in place in June of 2012, and now, it's being further cemented into our district policy manual. I seriously ask the board to reconsider this policy, or at least to omit the first three paragraphs. I feel like it, it's something that's totally unnecessary. Why would the board want to restrict its ability to get information for making decisions related to our students and teachers?
To answer that question, it was because we were getting so many emails, there were about three or four a week, asking different people within the staff for information, it was getting very confusing, time-consuming, and in order to allow our staff and administration to do the work they did, we felt like we needed to organize that flow of information better, and for that reason, we passed this, so that we now have a process that all board members follow, and that was the reason that we did that. The reason that I voted to support this when we originally approved it.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I voted for it, simply because, out of professional courtesy to the superintendent, probably, my guess is this, if I called Dr. Baldwin up and said, "I need to know something about personnel, and blah, 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 blah," more than likely, he's gonna say, "Dusty gives him the call," you know, just out of professional courtesy, "Do you understand where I'm going there?" Instead of trying to play "gotcha," then, just out of pure professional courtesy, I'm gonna call him and say, "Tony, do you mind if I talk to Tim, Tim Fairley?" Or, you know, I might call Tim, and Tim and I might have a conversation, and I might, then I'm gonna inform Dr. Baldwin that Tim and I had this conversation, or possibly any other principles. Pure professional courtesy, in a nutshell, that's all.
But the problem is, with this policy, you can't do that.
I can do that.
No, you can only ask, any requests have to be made to the superintendent.
I don't feel that way.
But the policy states that?
Just out of pure professional courtesy.
All board member requests for information from central office staff must be directed to the superintendent.
I still don't feel respectful.
Okay, all right.
But maybe you can talk to Mr. Fairley, but I can't? Is it, are there two different sets of rules here?
All right, okay, we're gonna move along, folks, I think everyone's made their point. There's no need to, you know, keep reiterating the same things over and over, so, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, next is policy twenty-two twenty, official school spokesperson, do they have a motion to approve this policy?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, questions or comments?
Yes, again, I had asked to strike the last two paragraphs. It's a very micro-managing the school board, giving the superintendent the power to do that when we're elected, to represent the people, and I feel I don't have a problem with telling the communications director that I'm going to make a statement to the media, for example, that's in here, I think that, you know, that is fine, I don't have a problem with that. But I do have a problem, again, the assumption is made, and the board should be very concerned, that, the assumption is made in here, that we don't know what we're doing. Again, that we are gonna make inaccurate and incomplete statements to the media, and that they will need to be corrected by the superintendent. There is no vice versa here, if the communications department puts the spin on something, we aren't allowed to correct them. However, I'm insulted, I think we should all be insulted, by this assumption, again, that we're gonna have inaccurate and incomplete information, and perhaps that's because we are restricted, again, into what information we can request from central office staff.
Dr. Baldwin?
I think the board's aware, I receive considerable number of requests from individual board members, and without fail, my response always goes, regardless of who makes that request, I send my response to everybody. Now, there's a reason for that, and it's part of, in my opinion, just good, solid organizational structure. I serve the board, I do not serve one individual board member. In my opinion, again, individual board members may not necessarily represent the majority of this board, so who speaks for them? You have an elected chairperson, you have an elected vice chair, but again, the board is the whole, not one individual board member.
And I think that's important, you know, to make sure that we all realize that, you know, individually, we have the same rights as anyone in the public.
You just took those away.
As four members of this board have the ability to change anything that we choose to do so, a majority of the board, and so, I think it's important for us all to remember that.
Yes, I don't have any problem with the first two paragraphs that talks about communicating with the media, and the official spokesperson. Again, it's the last two paragraphs, the micro-managing of the board, the assumption that the board is giving out inaccurate or incomplete information.
Duly, duly noted, Ms. Baldwin.
I think it's duly noted, at times, there has been inaccurate and incomplete information that has been distributed publicly. I think that's been said on multiple occasions in board meetings. And I'll also say this relevant to this central office, because I heard a very wise person say, at one point in time, talking about a team, that team members can't serve multiple coaches. So, when contacts are made by individual board members to this central office team, I think it circumvents that leader that you hired a superintendent to lead this central office. So, again, circumventing that, I think, just goes against good management principles for an effective organization. And I would challenge any board member, per this policy, again, I receive requests from a number of you, some certainly more than others. I think, with few exceptions, you've had responses that have come back from me in a very timely manner, and that's understanding that I'm a superintendent of the eleventh-largest school system in this state, and my time schedule is extremely busy, but I keep that as a priority, because I know that communication is important. So, those responses are coming back, unless I'm hearing something different, which I've not at this point in time, from any board member, you're getting responses and information back in a very timely manner.
I would like to ask Dr. Baldwin to please submit facts to back up the statement that board members are giving out inaccurate information.
All right, we're gonna move along, Ms. Baldwin.
Excuse me, I have the floor.
Excuse me, Ms. Baldwin, we're gonna move along.
I didn't receive answers at the last board meeting to my questions in advance.
All in favor of policy twenty-two twenty, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, now, we're gonna move on to policy thirty, thirty, thirty-two, thirty, thirty-two twenty-five, technology and responsible use, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any questions or comments?
Yes, my, I want some clarification on the privacy section, which is letter E, found on page four of the policy. It says, "Users should not assume that files or communications created or transmitted using school system technological resources, or stored on services or hard devices of individual computers, will be private. School system administrators or individuals designated by the superintendent may review files, monitor all communication, and intercept email messages to maintain system integrity and to ensure compliance with board policy and applicable laws and regulations. School system personnel shall monitor online activities of individuals who access the internet via a school-owned computer." And now, I understand with the Bring Your Own Device Initiative, that's the impetus for this policy, that student emails can be checked, may be checked right now, and that's, I wanna know the extent of how these communications are being checked, if there's a Google Management's been used, or if they're being flagging emails, I don't know if Mr. Frisbee can tell me that what's being used, and whether students have been informed that this is actually happening, that their student email accounts may be monitored.
Mr. Campbell? Oh, okay, go ahead.
As soon as students log into a computer in Monmouth County Schools, they accept the AUP, it's a pop-up window that pops up every time. When they agree to that, they're agreeing to the fact that we could search anything that they have, as far as what they're using on that Monmouth County Schools machine. Our student emails are filtered through GaggleNet. By federal law, we have to filter their messages that they send back and forth to whoever, doesn't matter if it's somebody outside the system or inside the system, they must be filtered, and we have a communication set up with GaggleNet to where they inform us of any communication that goes wrong, or has any kind of explicit language, or any pornography, or anything like that, that is in that email. Now, let me give you an example. A week or so ago, we had a student that emailed another student in the system, and he used the word fading. Fading is slang for smoking marijuana right now. Within five minutes, that email was recovered by GaggleNet, we received a phone call, but that was in a message that a student had sent to another student. Within ten minutes, we had the principal on the phone, we had the student in the office, and the student admitted to sending the message. He sent the message because he had heard his brother use the term before, but he was not, at that time, using or smoking marijuana. So, that's just an example of the type of filter that we have on student email, including porn, including protecting their identity, and it's all about safety.
Any kind of threatening message or bullying that comes up, if that language is mentioned that comes to, it comes for us to follow up with accountability?
So, if you bring your own device on campus, like I have my computer right now, and if I use my school board email account, then that's being filtered or monitored. If I use my personal email account, and I'm on your internet system, is that also being filtered or monitored?
Students cannot access any email except their Monmouth County Schools email inside this system.
Okay.
They're all blocked.
My daughter does. I shouldn't confess this. If you have Google email, can you use that from a school computer?
Yes, our students are in the Google domain.
Okay, yeah, okay, so that's just the only thing that's being filtered, and if they have their cell phones, and I guess if those don't necessarily connect to the system.
We ask our students in our user policy for BYOD, for them to turn their three or four G device off, and use our BYOD access for that phone. Now, can we police that? We don't have enough people in this district to police that. As long with that same device that you're talking about, that personal device, we can't police the content that's on that device. All we can police and filter is the access we're giving them to the internet.
Yeah, I understand that, so did you say this was a federal law, that you can filter the emails?
We have to, just as if we have to keep three years of staff email in a postini service that we use, in order to look that up later on, if something comes up that we need to look at. That's required by law, too.
And that's probably a public record, anyway. But the student email wouldn't be a public record, necessarily?
No, no. I don't know if you're referring to the act that covered it, or the actual email, but no, the student's email is not part of public record.
But it is part of the federal law that you can monitor the student mail, because they're on your system, using?
That's correct.
The school email accounts.
If we provide it to them, it must be filtered.
Okay. So, if they sign on to the system with their personal device, does that same agreement pop up?
Does not.
So, have they been informed, I guess, I'm concerned that they aren't informed, and that they, about this occurring?
We have a BYOD acceptable user policy that we shared with everyone, if they've not read it, it's just because they haven't taken the opportunity to read it.
Is that something parents have to sign?
No, it's available for them to sign, it's optional, it's posted on our website, anyone can get to it and see it, but it is an agreement form, they choose whether or not they want to sign it. We just don't have the manpower to maintain all of that.
Is there any plan to, you know, explicitly, verbally, or whatever, make a, we have the automated calling system, let parents know that this is happening? let parents know that this is happening?
We did that when we initially introduced BYOD back in May of last year. And also, over the summer, before the school started in August, it happened again to where we informed them that it was going to be available, and it's now available K-12.
And they were told that you were monitoring and filtering?
It's part of the BYOD agreement, if they've read the form.
But that wasn't, was that in the phone message, too?
Yes, but it was on the website, it was posted on the website. And then we have a website dedicated just to BYOD.
I'm sorry, I just need to clarify the last time, that the student emails, even though they're not public records, but it is a federal law that you can monitor those.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Clarity, it's not a federal law that you can, it's a federal requirement, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And remember, we have work sessions so that we can hash out most of these details ahead of time, so...
And we did talk about it.
That's the purpose of the work sessions. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? I believe that we have covered everything on the action agenda. Am I missing anything? So now we have the consent agenda. And I won't read everything on the consent agenda, but it also includes the remaining 3,000 series policies that we did not discuss. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes, a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's good. All right, so we have some policies for first reading. We have some more 3,000 policies. We have some 4,000 policies. Today, we worked on the 7,000 series policies. So if any questions come up about any of these policies, we will certainly be glad to discuss it during our work session. And our next board meeting will also be moved back a week due to Christmas and New Year's holiday break. Our next meeting will be Thursday, January the 9th, at 6:30. I hope that everyone has a nice Christmas and a happy new year, and do have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.